Good evening, everybody. It's 6:00 PM and welcome to the March 23rd, 2022 meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission. Shall we take roll? I see Ms. Ruthers is out and Mr. Graff are out. The minutes for March 9th meeting will be presented at a later date. Mr. Miesmer, is there any correspondence?
No correspondence, Mr. Chair, other than that related to items on the agenda.
Thank you, sir. We'll start with new business, item D1, public hearing for SDP 2021-0012, Port of Anacortes JKL Lot Improvements. Ms... Are you ready to present?
I am. Thank you, Chair, and good evening, Planning Commission members, members of the audience. I'm just going to get this into slideshow mode here. Okay, so, yes, this evening before you, you have an application made by the Port of Anacortes. The city file number is SDP 2021-0012, and the project is titled "Port of Anacortes JKL Parking Lot Improvements." The project is located at 600 T Avenue. So it is on this aerial, there's Market Street here, well, first of all, Cap Sani Marina, Fidalgo Bay is right here, and then Market Street along the west side turns into Sixth Street, and then T Avenue on the eastern edge. The applicant for this project, as I mentioned, is the Port of Anacortes, Kevin Anderson from the Port of Anacortes. He is also the contact person. And the property owner is also the Port of Anacortes. So the site is currently a gravel parking lot, and it provides parking for JK and L docks of the Cap Sani Marina. So you can see, it's hard to pick up here, but JK and L are just to the south of that parking area. For the proposal overview, the project is proposing improvements to an existing gravel parking lot, including landscaping, paving, striping, storm drainage and treatment, stormwater drainage and treatment, sidewalks, and lighting. And this slide is up here just to show you the project sites relation to a previous project that the commission had reviewed. It was a proposed RV park just to the north, and that was a conditional use permit that you all saw last year, and the city council approved that recommendation on September So the project review process, the applicant has submitted a shoreline substantial development permit application and a site plan review application. One is a type 4 review process and one is a type 2. And because the applicant requested concurrent review, we are putting both through concurrently as a type 4 review process. And the type 4 review process just means coming to Planning Commission for a public hearing and then to city council for a final decision. Can you all hear me okay? Project history, the applicant held a mandatory pre-application meeting on October 20, 2021. There was a neighborhood meeting for the proposal held on November 30th, 2021. The formal application was submitted on December 21st, 2021, and the department deemed the application complete as of July, sorry, January 22nd, 2022. There was a notice of application and comment period published in February of 2022. This public hearing was noticed, and the notice was published on February 16th, 2022. There were no public comments received during the written public comment period, and tonight we'll have the public hearing. And this project is scheduled to go before the city council. If the planning commission makes a recommendation this evening, it would go to city council for a closed record decision on April 4th. Okay, so this is a map showing the property a little bit more up close, the shoreline area. The property size, the overall size of the property where the project will take place is about 3.88 acres, and approximately two of those acres are within shoreline jurisdiction. That's what this blue overlay is showing. There's the ordinary high watermark down here, and then 200 feet landward is where the edge of shoreline jurisdiction is. There is currently space for about 90 vehicles. The lot is gravel, so there are no marked spaces, so it's sort of informal parking at this point, but there's enough room for about 90 vehicles. And the site is currently covered by approximately, or it's approximately 68% impervious surface, hard surfacing. Stormwater that is generated from the site currently sheet flows to Fidalgo Bay or is collected via catch basins and an underground conveyance system and discharged into Fidalgo Bay or Guaymas Channel untreated. So this is our permitted use matrix from the Shoreline Master Program, and it again shows all of the different shoreline environment designations across the top and uses along the left side, I almost said west side, left side. So because a portion of the site is within shoreline jurisdiction, the entire project has to get a shoreline substantial development permit and is subject to the Shoreline Master The, as I mentioned before, urban shoreline environment designation applies to this site, and accessory parking, which this proposed use is, it's currently used for accessory parking to the marina and the continued use will be accessory parking to the marina, and that is a permitted use in the urban designation. The site is, has a zoning and future land use designation of commercial marine, and marinas and accessory parking are also a permitted use in the commercial marine zone. Critical areas that are located on the site, there are some geologically hazardous areas in the vicinity. This orange area is a tsunami hazard area, and the kind of lightly colored blue area is also prone to liquefaction because it is composed primarily of fill materials. There's also a wetland located up in the northwest corner offsite that won't be impacted by the project. According to FEMA floodplain, or excuse me, flood insurance rate maps, a portion of the site is mapped within the 100-year floodplain, and the applicant did provide a survey of site elevations, and the city floodplain administrator concurred that the site is actually above the base flood elevation, which is seven feet. And so those floodplain management regulations would not apply to this development. Just getting a little more into detail about the project components, the project will include site grading activities, including approximately 6,137 cubic yards of cut and 9,975 cubic yards of fill. There will be utilities installed, including stormwater, excuse me, including electrical and water for irrigation, stormwater facilities, including a system of catch basins, conveyance pipes, and water quality devices will also be installed. So you can see the, I think they're showing the storm pipes here. There will be paving and striping for 136 parking spaces, including four ADA accessible spaces over here in the lower right-hand corner. And sidewalks will be added to Market Street to continue on the sidewalks that were proposed as part of the RV park, crosswalks and sidewalks along the north side of the access road within the, internally within the parking lot itself, and then continuing down to the waterfront esplanade, just located down here, and over to T Avenue. So lots of good improvements in connectivity on this site. There will also be some lighting installed for safety, and again, just to reiterate, there's no in-water work proposed. All of the work is quite a distance from the ordinary high watermark. This is the landscaping plan. Landscaping is proposed to be incorporated into the site design in accordance with city standards. So we've got street trees located along Market Street within the six-foot wide planter. We've got a type C landscape buffer, which is required to screen the street, or the parking area from the street. There are a couple of open space areas for recreation, kind of informal open space areas. And then there is some landscaping along the northern portion of the site between the parking area and the RV park. And internally, our code requires that parking lots be landscaped at a certain rate depending on how large they are. Couple of photos showing the sites from a couple days ago. So this one is looking west towards the Preston over here. This is that access road. Oops. Ooh. This one is looking kind of northwest towards, this is DCI's building, I believe, back here. Looking northeast towards Cap Sani, the hill up here. And this is looking southwest, back towards the marina. So city staff did review the application for conformance with the approval criteria for shoreline substantial development permit and site plan review criteria, and found that the proposed project conforms to all of the requirements of those documents. And staff's complete analysis is located within your staff report in your packet. Follow-up with just a couple of key points based on staff review. The project, as I mentioned, is consistent with the Shoreline Master Program policies and development regulations, including those related to the urban shoreline environment, the specific use policies and regulations for parking. There are no shoreline modifications proposed as part of this project, so that's not applicable. The environmental protection regulations within the Shoreline Master Program and shoreline public access, the new sidewalks will provide good connectivity to the existing esplanade and improve Americans with disabilities access. And the project is anticipated to result in no net loss of ecological functions necessary to sustain shoreline natural resources, and that is because the existing developed site is comprised of extensive historic fill material. The proposal includes improved stormwater management and water quality and an overall, whoop, an overall reduction in impervious surface areas, along with increased landscaping. The staff's recommendation was approval with conditions, and the conditions are outlined in your staff report, and they are pretty boilerplate conditions, nothing too exciting in there. And so that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to try to answer those. I'm not sure, I think we probably have the applicant on the line, and they may wish to make some remarks, and then we could open the public hearing and continue on with deliberation and recommendation. Any questions? Okay. Okay. Are there any questions for me right now?
Mr. Curtis.
Thank you very much for a really good report, just put the packet in for this evening. I had two questions. The first is about, and we didn't mention it this evening, was the restroom and laundry facility that was proposed at the, the restroom and laundry facilities proposed at the northwest corner of the site. It's described in the packet. Are you familiar with that?
That would have been as part of the RV park? The RV park was, the conditional use permit was already approved by the planning commission.
Okay. I saw it mentioned in this packet, so I was curious about that. I'll discuss with you afterwards, then if it's already been discussed, I apologize. More of a general question. The 136 proposed parking spots that come with this, only four of them are ADA. Is that, does that ratio meet the requirement, 3%?
Oh, that is a good question. I might need to look to Mr. Miesmer to whether he knows the answer. For ADA accessible parking stalls, what is the minimum requirement based on?
That's a great question. Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Accessible parking stalls are based on the total number of stalls and determined via the International Building Code. And I don't have the code in front of me right now, but we will be reviewing it based on the International Building Code, and I, gosh, I want to, I want to say for every 75 parking spaces, there should be four ADA spaces, but we will make sure that it meets the International Building Code requirements.
Looking at it, it seemed like four for 136 seemed a little bit light.
Could be, and we'll need to verify that through our International Building Code. I apologize, I don't have that memorized.
A follow-up question, Mr. Miesmer. If the number of spaces is required degree greater than four, is that covered in the conditions already proposed for this process?
So the commissioners could create a condition that requires that they meet the International Building Code requirements for accessible parking stalls?
Is there any, any need for that, I guess is what I'm asking?
Oh, in my opinion, no, sir. Because we're going to, as you know, staff is going to review this, and before it goes out the door, it's going to have to meet all of our requirements.
Fine, thank you. Mr. Malino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question within the staff report. In section 6.2.1, there's a reference to the stormwater management report and its internal review, I assume, by Public Works and Engineering. And was that the basis for determining the stormwater utility installation?
Correct. So the stormwater plan has been submitted to our Public Works Department, and they've, they're still in the process of reviewing it. They've reviewed it several times with a third-party consultant and getting close to final approval of that document. So yes, the installation of the stormwater utilities will be required to be consistent with that approved plan. Does that answer your question?
Oh, very much so. Thank you, and excellent job on the staff report.
Dr. Martin?
Just actually a follow-up, because I was looking at that same 6.2.1, and just curious, you mentioned in the report a hydrodynamic separator, and then in 6.2.1, it's a storm filter devices and modular wetland systems. Of course, you know, the stormwater runoff is the biggest concern. Just, can you describe it at all? What does it, what is it?
You know, I couldn't describe these specific types of water quality devices. I just don't have the knowledge to do that. There might be, if we wanted to see if the applicant had any remarks that they would like to make, they may have some more information on that.
Let's proceed with that. Can we hear from the representative for the project?
Hey, guys. Hello?
Mr. Anderson, do you have anything you'd like to present?
Not a presentation, but just a little sort of define what the difference between the hydrodynamic separator. That's kind of a generic term for a stormwater treatment device that filters out, not filters, but separates out solids and floatables. So a storm filter is one of those proprietary devices that was maybe called out in one of the plans. Modular wetland is one where water enters and goes through a root bed of plants, and it removes sediments, hydrocarbons, and metals. They're two different treatment devices, and they're used in two different spots in the plan for the, for the parking lot.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Anderson?
Do you have any other particular questions?
Apparently not.
Okay. If you do, just let me know.
Are there any further questions from the council?
Yeah, I have a couple. Can you define cut and fill? Does cut mean removal of ground or just moving it? And obviously fill is...
I think it means both. It could be cutting and taking it off-site or cutting it from one place and moving it to another place on site.
So it would be exporting some, inboarding some.
Right.
On the last project, there was some neighborhood concern, I think mostly from the east, about traffic flow. I'm assuming this project, that there was none regarding this project since the access is all from the south?
We did not receive any public comments or concern. No.
Mr. Curtis.
Said one follow-up to that, that's the last question. The meeting, the public meeting that was on November 30th, can you, was that attended by anybody? Well-attended, poorly-attended, not-attended?
Um, I believe it was myself and two representatives from the Port of Anacortes. It was a virtual meeting, and we did not have any attendees.
Great, thank you.
From the public.
Okay, if there are no further questions, we'll open the public hearing. Are, is there any members of the public that wish to present or speak?
Mr. Chair, there are no members present.
Thank you. We will close the public hearing. Are there any further comments or discussions from commissioners? Mr. Juretsky?
Do we know the timing? Are they going to do this project after the RV park's done? Are they going to do them simultaneously, when right, you know, together, or...
I have heard that we should expect seeing a clearing and grading permit application for both of the projects after this project goes through the process, so I think that they do want to do them at the same time.
In that case, I move to recommend approval of SDP 2021-0012 to city council, including the shoreline substantial development permit and site plan, subject to the staff recommended conditions of approval contained within the staff report of record.
Second?
Any other comments or questions? Shall we call the roll?
Yes.
Malino?
Yes.
Juretsky?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes, or I.
Thank you.
And the chair votes aye. Chair votes yes, too.
Oh, yeah. Ward?
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our second item of business, public hearing, SDP 2022-0001, Port of Anacortes Pier 2 Segregation Curb. Do we have a presentation?
We do. This is Emily, trying to figure out how to get my screen pulled up here. Bear with me a moment. It's not showing up on my screen. Ah, there we go. Had too many windows open. All right. Can we all see my presentation? I've learned my lesson on starting without asking. Okay, let's get started. Emily Morgan, senior planner with the city, and today we'll be talking and hearing about another port project, which is for Pier 2, which is their segregation curb. So the request is, the Port of Anacortes is looking for the approval of a shoreline substantial development permit that would include the installation of a segregation curb, and this curb would be installed between two adjoining port-owned properties. And the main purpose is to prevent stormwater runoff and to kind of provide a durable delineation between the two properties. As stated, the applicant and the project agent for this project for the port is Kevin Jumping into the project history, on November 16th of 2021, the port requested and held a pre-application meeting with planning staff, which is a requirement for this type 3 shoreline substantial development permit. December 7th, we also held a neighborhood meeting. There were no public attendees, so it only ran for 15 minutes, which is ideal, meaning no negative feedback. Then on February 1st of this year, the formal application was submitted, with it being deemed complete for processing on February 3rd. On February 9th, staff issued the notice of application and public hearing. This project, it would have required CEPA review from, well, not necessarily CEPA review, but a determination made by staff, but as lead agency, the port has the authority to remedy that and determine that CEPA is exempt for this project. On March 11th, the public comment period ended. Should be noted that the only comments that were received on the project were stating that there was no comment. As far as the existing site, as mentioned, this is to delineate and prevent runoff between Dakota Industries, which is on Pier 1, as well as the Port Marine Bulk Loading Facility, which is located on Pier 2. This is zoned for marine manufacturing and shipping, which does allow for that type of use out there. And the two facilities operate under separate stormwater permits, which are issued and regulated by DOE, so this just, again, allows that site to be fully contained. So the actual proposal is where this yellow line is, that is where the curbing will be installed, and it will run, it'll be two feet tall and run for a total of 387 feet and installed adjacent to an existing chain link fence. Due to the location here, it is within shoreline jurisdiction, so therefore we're requiring the shoreline permit. The curb will be reinforced with rebar to make it durable and built upon a subbase of DOT maintenance rock, so crushed rock to provide a stable foundation. And this would result in approximately 160 cubic yards of material, which would be imported, and it would be approximately equal to what would be currently removed from on-site. So as mentioned, this is a permitted use for upwind fill in the urban maritime sector. So as mentioned, this is a permitted use for upwind fill in the urban maritime shoreline environment designation. Due to the scope of work, it did require shoreline substantial development permit as it was not, it would not qualify for an exemption. So the key points here, seems like a fairly straightforward project and this area kind of indicates where the work will actually take place. Again, the urban maritime shoreline environment designation does allow for upwind fill as a permitted use. With this project, there's no in-water work. The proposed curbing would further contain the industrial runoff and just kind of protect the environment of the shoreline by not allowing contaminants. Further, the current use of the property is not changing. It will continue the use. It's more just to supplement the existing stormwater facility, which has been previously reviewed and approved through an SDP, I believe in 2011. So based on the application materials, the finding of facts, conclusions within the staff report, I am recommending approval from the Planning Commission as you have the authority to render that decision, so far as it is subject to the proposed conditions of approval. And thank you for your time, and I'm ready for any questions if you may have them, or we can ask Kevin questions. And go ahead and open the public hearing.
I see no questions from the commissioner. Does the project representative have anything you want to add?
Only that Emily was pretty complete. Thank you.
With that, we will open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to ask questions or make a comment or statement?
Mr. Chair, there is no public present.
With that, we will close the public meeting and open it for further discussion. Any commissioners' issues or questions? Chair will entertain a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve SDP 2022-0001, subject to the staff recommended conditions of approval contained within the staff report of record.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can we take the roll, please? Yes.
Curtis?
Aye.
Malino?
Aye.
Juretsky?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, everybody. I believe our next agenda item is an initial presentation of the 2021 Docket of Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulation Amendment Items. Ms. Graich, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will get started here as soon as I can get my slideshow up and running. Okay, so yes, as you mentioned, this agenda item is an introduction to the Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations Annual Amendment Process, and specifically discussing the 2021 docket. A little bit of an agenda, because this is not a really quick presentation, but hopefully it will be the right length. So first, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the background of a high-level overview of the Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations to sort of provide a common understanding for what those documents are and how they're used in the city. And then I will talk a little bit about the local regulations governing the legislative amendment process. And then we'll go into an overview of the 2021 docket that was established by City Council last year. And then we'll talk about next steps in the process. So as background, the city of Anacortes plans under the Growth Management Act, and that is a state law that requires communities to develop a comprehensive plan to guide population growth over the planning horizon, which is typically a 20-year period, and also to adopt development regulations that implement that comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan is a broad statement of a community's vision and values for the future. It's really general in nature and provides a policy roadmap for the community's growth over the next 20 years. And the guidance that is contained within a comp plan is intentionally general, just providing broad direction, and it typically doesn't prescribe any specific implementation measures or regulatory actions. The development regulations are our specific regulations which govern the development of land. And as I mentioned, they are required to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Both of these documents are subject to continuing review and evaluation under the Growth Management Act. And the purpose is to make sure that they remain internally consistent and up-to-date with various state laws that may change over time. And also just to address changes in local conditions or community preferences. One of the types of update is, sorry. The mechanisms for this review and evaluation include mandatory periodic updates, which occur every eight years. And the next one for Anacortes is due in 2025. Anacortes completed the last one in 2016. And then there is an optional annual amendment process, which provides the opportunity for anyone to make suggestions for amendments to the comprehensive plan or development regulations. And amendments proposed in this manner are required to be concurrently, so everything we get gets reviewed all at the same time, so that the cumulative effect of the proposals can be determined. And the city is allowed to adopt comprehensive plan amendments only once per year, except for in limited circumstances. So this is our Anacortes Comprehensive Plan, adopted in July 2016, after a significant public process involving many, many, many community members and meetings. The comprehensive plan contains mandatory and optional elements that are required under the Growth Management Act. So the Anacortes Comp Plan includes elements related to land use, housing, capital facilities, transportation, utilities, environment and conservation, and parks and recreation. And each of these different elements contains goals and policies that are intended to guide the day-to-day decisions of local officials and staff. This is a, this is the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. This is a part of the land use element in the comprehensive plan, and it's intended to show the general location and distribution of various categories of land uses that are anticipated over the planning period. The Future Land Use Map is policy-oriented and is implemented in large part by the zoning, official zoning map for the city, which is a regulatory tool. So a property cannot be, a property zoning cannot be changed unless it's consistent with the Future Land Use Map designation and other applicable comp plan policies. So this is a screenshot of our Unified Development Code, which contains the majority of the development regulations for Anacortes. These are the regulations that development must meet in order to obtain any required permits for development. This is a subset of regulations that they must meet. The, as I mentioned, the development regulations must be consistent with the comprehensive plan and implement the comprehensive plan. Development regulations include provisions governing the allowed use of land, form and intensity standards like building setbacks, building heights, maximum lot coverage, property access requirements, site and building design standards, and critical areas regulations, and probably a lot more. The last major update of these development regulations occurred with the adoption of the Critical Areas Regulations in 2021, so that was a major, a major update. And prior to that, there was a major overhaul of our development regulations completed in 2019 in order to implement the comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2016. So we've had some pretty major updates to both of those documents over the last three to five years, and that's why we haven't seen any annual amendments come before the commission, because we've been working on those larger projects where we haven't had any citizen-initiated proposals. And so, yep. So this is kind of the first time in a while that we've done this annual amendment process. So this is a timeline, general timeline, kind of showing the annual amendment process steps. The city has adopted Anacortes Municipal Code, Chapter 1916, Legislative Actions, and that establishes the rules for how amendments are to be accepted and processed. The chapter applies to adoption and amendment of the comprehensive plan goals and policies, the comprehensive plan future land use map that we looked at, and implementing development regulations. And here is the overview of the annual process. So petitions for an amendment must be submitted by the last business day in March every year in order to be considered for that, that year's docket. The Planning, Community, and Economic Development Department review the petitions that are received and make a recommendation to the City Council on which should be docketed as part of that year, year's review. Once the department has completed its recommendation, City Council holds a public hearing, and a docket is established by resolution. So all of these steps have already occurred in this, in the 2021 docket process. Now, here's my little arrow, we are about here in the review process. So we are at a point where we are conducting environmental review on the proposed amendments and beginning our Planning Commission review in preparation for a public hearing. And then after the Planning Commission holds a public hearing, you will make a recommendation to City Council on whether to approve or adopt the various amendment requests. And then that recommendation will go to City Council. They can hold a public hearing if they would like to, and then adoption of the amendments. So it's kind of a long process and take a little while to complete. So now on to the actual amendments that we received. I just wanted to give that kind of background before I dove into this part. So as part of the, in 2020 and 2021, the city received three citizen-initiated petitions. Two of those were to the comprehensive plan text, so amendments to the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. And one of the proposed amendments was to the future land use map, so changing the designation for a property on the future land use map. And then there are 11 amendments that have been initiated by the city or city staff are proposing these amendments. One is a comprehensive plan text amendment that is mostly technical cleanup in nature. And then there are 10 development regulation amendments that staff has proposed. As I mentioned, City Council had a public hearing on all of those docket requests, and by Resolution 3042, they docketed all of the requests. So all of those petitions are coming forward for your review, your review and the public's So first, I'm going to go through the citizen-initiated proposals. There are three of them, as I mentioned. These numbers don't really mean anything, it's just a shorter way to identify them, so I've given them the letter P for public. And so P1 is related to short-term rentals. P2 is the Future Land Use Amendment Proposal, and P3 is titled Toward Zero Waste. So P1, this is an amendment proposal, or request submitted by Evergreen Islands. It is a request to amend Goal H1 in the housing element of the comprehensive plan. And Evergreen Islands is proposing adding two policies that would direct the city to regulate short-term vacation rentals in order to address their impacts on affordable housing availability and to protect residential neighborhoods. So these written here are the two goals that Ever, or excuse me, policies that Evergreen Islands is proposing be added to Goal H1. Are there any questions on that one? I'm just going to move through these, and feel free to interrupt me or ask questions if you would like.
A couple of questions, just procedural more than anything. As we review these 14 amendments, are they going to be each voted on individually for forwarding to the City Council or as a package? And how do we make changes to the recommendations before it goes to City Council?
Right. So I think we could do it either way. When we get to that point, we certainly could vote amendment by amendment, and Planning Commission could identify recommended changes to each of those. I think that would work just fine. For now, the development regulation amendments that I'm going to get into here in a minute, you'll notice that there is not specific text revisions included in this presentation, and that is because staff is still putting the final touches on the proposed text amendments, and will be putting those out here in the next couple of weeks, along with a notice of public comment period and public hearing. So those will all be published here very shortly. But this, I intended to just kind of give an overview introduction to the process tonight.
And a follow-up question, then. On the specific wording of a proposed change, if the Planning Commission, for example, decides that the wording should be different, how do we, how do we conform that to the original request from the public or from the, from the staff?
Yeah, ultimately, the Planning Commission will make a record, it'll be a recorded motion, basically. And so it would go through each of the amendments and talk about what the Planning Commission's recommendations for each is.
So the wording could be proposed to be changed and voted on as...
Exactly.
A change proposal.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Curtis?
Would this be an inappropriate or appropriate time to ask a couple of follow-up questions about each of these public proposals? Will there be an opportunity to do that in greater detail later, or would it be okay now?
Well, my plan is to go through the rest of them, and you can ask questions then, or I'm happy to, is it about one that we haven't talked about yet?
It's about the one that you're, it's on the screen now.
Please do.
Proceed. Thank you. Could you just give me a real quick summary of what the current code is with respect to short-term vacation rentals?
Yes.
Please. Please.
Yeah. So the, the city does currently regulate overnight lodging as a category in, in the development regulations and would consider short-term rentals fitting under that, that definition. And it's basically defined as accommodations arranged for short-term stays, less, less than 30 days. And at this point, the only kind of short-term vacation rentals that are currently permitted to be established in most residential zones is a bed and breakfast. And a bed and breakfast has specific requirements for the property owner to be onsite and for the room that's being rented to be in the main house. Bed and breakfasts require a conditional use permit, so it's a process to go through to, to get approval. And so that's how we treat them in residential areas right now. There, there are quite a few legal non-conforming short-term vacation rentals that were approved before the change in the code in 2019, and those have been allowed to continue as legal non-conforming uses.
Just a follow-up question. Thank you for the explanation. What, what does Evergreen propose with this that's not currently prohibited under code? Is it just the inclusion of the, of the phrase short-term vacation rentals to imply Airbnb's and VRBOs? Because it sounds like what they're proposing is already prohibited.
Well, I, I think that what they're proposing is, would allow for a more holistic, deeper dive into the development regulations about short-term rentals in general to maybe look at citywide. You know, what does the community want to see in a, in a holistic way? Should they be allowed in residential areas? And what are the impacts on residential areas? What are the benefits for property owners? Kind of looking at the larger question holistically. So this, their proposal would put into place policies in the comprehensive plan that guide us to do that evaluation and make changes to the development regulations. That's how I would see it.
Thank you.
Mr. Trudsky.
Sure. Some of the units then are prior to 2019, it's allowable use of, in a residential neighborhood. Does the city have a mechanism, or does the city collect any, is sales tax charged and the city, does the city collect sales tax from those folks? And how is that monitored? I mean, how do we know people are reporting what they're collecting?
Yes, the, for the rentals that were issued business licenses when they were still permitted prior to 2019, lodging tax is collected by the platform, the online platform, and remitted to the city. So we do know that some are paying, and there are quite a few out there that are not, might not have gone through the appropriate process to get, to be able to be a short-term rental. But that is, that's something that's on our radar.
Okay, so there are some people operating who did not go through the permit process and aren't getting the annual license? Is that correct? I mean, we're, we're assuming that, obviously.
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of the
So some people are not permitted, and they, they're flying under the radar?
Yes.
Obviously not paying the taxes. Are there any inspections done annually by, by the fire department or whatever to make sure some, especially the older homes comply for safety issues?
When they were still being issued business licenses, yes, there were inspections by the Build, Building Department and Fire Department, safety inspections. I don't know if those are conducted annually.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Mr. Meeser.
So to answer that question, question, since the pandemic, the fire department ceased those yearly inspections for businesses and so forth, and I think that those are starting back up now. The biggest problem for us is identifying all those short-term rentals, those vacation rentals. And so Ms. Graje has been, has been working very hard and diligently to look at all the various platforms and see how many there are in Anacortes. There are more than I expected, I can tell you that. And so as we start moving on through this process, we're going to be identifying those, notifying those that don't have licenses and that haven't had inspections, and letting them know what the consequences of this might be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm going to move on to the next one. Okay. Okay, so P2 is titled Skilling's Flum Amendment. Flum stands for Future Land Use Map. And so this petition was submitted by Thomas Skilling's, and he owned some property located at, down here in the kind of southeast portion of the city, at the southeast corner of the intersection of 35th and V. There we go. So 34th, 35th and V, and Fidalgo Bay Road. So this parcel, 3506, is owned by Mr. Skilling's, and then 311 and 3519 here are also owned by Mr. Skilling's, the petitioner. So the petitioner is proposing changing the comprehensive plan future land use map designation of a portion of these two parcels from industrial to residential medium density. And the purpose of the change is to accommodate the future placement of a residential accessory structure to the west of the existing home. And the desired location is currently designated industrial and would require moving the property line to accommodate required setbacks for the, the proposed structure. The municipal code does not allow boundary line adjustment that would result in a split-zoned lot, and therefore, a comprehensive plan map amendment and a rezone and a boundary line adjustment would all be required in order to accomplish the petitioner's objective here. If the comp plan change, land use maps, comp plan land use map change were approved, there would need to be a subsequent rezone so that the comp plan map and the, and the official zoning map are consistent. So I can kind of explain this a little more if need be, my graphic isn't the best. So this parcel here is owned by Mr. Skilling's, and then there's a parcel here, and a parcel here. He would like to move this lot line between these two parcels over to this location. But as I mentioned, in order to do that, the future land use map designation would need to be changed to residential.
So Ms. Graje, am I correct in assuming that we'll have some kind of staff analysis of this proposal?
Yes.
As we move further down the line?
We will.
Okay, thank you.
Right now, I'm just, yeah, I'm presenting these as they are submitted. And also, I should mention that the petitioners will also have an opportunity to present information to the commission at the public hearing, so you'll have an opportunity to hear from them and ask questions of them as well.
Great. So you're just sort of laying out the table here?
Yeah, yes, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to move on if there's no comments about that one. Okay, so P3 is a petition that was submitted by Ryan Walters, and this amendment would add a new goal to the utilities element of the comprehensive plan. And the new goal would be to increase recycling and composting to 65% of the municipal solid waste stream. And kind of a little bit of background to this, Anacortes has an inter-local agreement with Skagit County and other cities regarding solid waste management. And as part of that, the, the cities have agreed to adopt Skagit County's Solid Waste Management Plan. And that plan lays out goals for the entire county. One of the goals is to increase recycling and composting countywide to 65% of the, of the waste stream. And so this proposal would really add that goal to the Anacortes Comp Plan Utilities Element, making it more visible and providing targets and supporting policies to guide city staff implementation of city waste reduction targets. And I'm happy to, I could read through these if you would like, or, or not.
We'll get to this in the, in the bigger session, I'm sure.
Yeah, yep, we can do that. So they're laid out for you, and they're also in the, the staff report and in the, I should ask, were you all able to access the applicant, the actual petition application materials? From the
I recall seeing a matrix.
Okay. I had some links in there that you should have been able to get to those, the actual petitions themselves. I did not include those in the packet, the pa, the packet, there's just links to them, just so you know that you can, you can get to them that way. Okay, so those are the, that concludes the citizen-initiated proposals that are on the 2021 docket, and now we will move on to the city-initiated proposals. As I mentioned, there is one proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan and multiple proposed amendments to Title 19 Unified Development Code. So this first amendment is proposed, and this section, this actually, this is not within an element of the comp plan, it's within kind of the introduction, introduction section of the comprehensive plan. And it's basically listing out other city plans that are incorporated by reference into the comprehensive plan. There are some plans, one plan namely that is not required to be incorporated into reference into the comprehensive plan, so the thought is to, you know, maybe not have that in there to avoid confusion, make things more clear about what actually is a part of the comp plan and what is not. So that one item is the Anacortes Community Forestlands Comprehensive Plan, and so we would propose removing that and also the shoreline, the reference to the Shoreline Master Program 2010, and that is in preparation for, you know, we've been discussing relocating shoreline policies into the comp plan, shoreline regulations into the development regulations. So that reference would no longer really be needed. And then finally, staff's proposing to eliminate the specific dates or years that these plans are adopted, so that we don't need to go back into this section every time and there's an update to one of those plans. Questions on that one? Okay. So that's the only comprehensive plan amendment that staff's proposing, proposing at this time. So moving on to C2, Anacortes Municipal Code, Chapter 1920, Application Procedures Vesting. So this, this proposed amendment would clarify vesting provisions for project permit applications. If you're not familiar with the vested rights doctrine, it, according to MRSC, it generally refers to the notion that a land use application, under the proper conditions, will be considered only under the land use statutes and ordinances at the time of the application submission. So when somebody submits a building permit application that is complete, they can expect to have that permit application reviewed under the codes in place when it was deemed complete, even if the city changes their development regulations or other zoning requirements. So the purpose of vesting is to provide certainty and predictability in land use regulations, and the legislature has actually codified the vested rights doctrine as applied to building permits, subdivisions, and development agreements. So the city's code right now identifies that building permits and land divisions vest at the time a complete application is filed. There are other types of land use permits that are required for certain proposals. For example, there might be a conditional use permit that will require a building permit down the line, or a site plan review that will require building permits down the line. And, and those applications do not vest under our current code. So this proposed amendment would basically clarify that these are the only types of permits that vest, and there are these other types of permits that you may be required to get through the process, but you only vest if you submit a complete building permit application or land division. Does that make sense? So the, we basically just want to follow what the legislature has codified in terms of vesting provisions, but clarify, there are these other permit types, and they do not vest, just to make it clear for everyone so they know. Okay. So C3 here is related to Chapter 19.22，并且，you know, I, I should also mention that all of these proposed amendments that, that we're bringing forward are based on staff's experience in administering the code over the last five, three to five years, and things that work and things that don't work, things that are confusing to applicants and staff and, and property owners, so kind of trying to tweak things to, to make, make it flow more smoothly and, and be more clear for everybody. So just, that's, that's the origin of, of all of these. So concurrency, concurrency regulations are in place to provide a mechanism to review the impacts from new development on concurrency facilities. Concurrent, concurrency facilities include water, sewer, stormwater, transportation, fire, and police. And a concurrency review process also makes sure that adequate facilities are in place to serve development at the time the development occurs, at the time that there is an impact from the development. And so the proposed amendment would add language regarding the director establishing a concurrency facilities review program. That language used to exist in the code prior to 2019, but we would like to add it back in. And that, and that is so that we can kind of formalize the process for concurrency review. Right now, the way that that is completed, when a development permit applic, application comes in, it's routed around to all of the different departments, fire, police, public works, and then they review that and determine what the impact will be on their facilities and provide comments back to the planning department. And so we would like to have a little bit more of a formalized administrative process for how that works and how things are monitored. And so this code amendment would just put that back in the code, letting everybody know that yes, this thing exists, and here's where you find it. We'd also like to add application submittal and reimbursement requirements for concurrency review. Sometimes there are projects where the city doesn't have the ability to review the capacity of certain facilities for some reason, and so it may require a third-party review or a consultant doing that analysis. And so we want to make sure that we're recovering those, being reimbursed for those costs from folks doing development. C4 is Section 1943-02OB regarding adult family homes and the definition of an adult family home. The proposal updates the definition to reflect changes to state law, which now allows provision of services of up to eight adults upon approval by DSHS. Currently, our code says six, so this would just be adding in language that up to eight beds may be provided if DSHS approves it. So it's just kind of a consistency thing between state law and, and our municipal code. C5, Chapter 1952, Public Street Design. So staff has proposed this amendment in consultation with the Public Works Engineering Department, and what we'd like to do is make a subtle change to the language in the community design standards related to provision of on-street parking. So there are comprehensive plan policies and guidance that guide us to reduce overall impervious surfaces, improve streetscape, encourage alternative methods of transportation, and the suggested change is just to change the terminology used, the terminology for parking lane to parking pocket. And we kind of feel like that would be more consistent with what the comprehensive plan, what we're moving towards in terms of designing those types of facilities for new development. Yes, sir?
Just a question about that particular picture. Is that fire hydrant far enough, is that car or that parking pocket far enough away from where the fire department, like a fire hydrant? I don't know what the proper distance is, but it seems very close. I just kind of wonder if that gets in the way of equipment if indeed they had to use it. But obviously, the pocket was designed to be that close to the fire hydrant.
Yeah, you know, this example is not from the city. This is one I just stole from somewhere, I can't remember. So I don't know, that's a good question.
They probably don't have fires there, so they're not worried about it.
Yeah, but definitely the fire department is looking at plans when they're civil plans, when they're submitted, and making sure that everything meets their standards. Okay, so this next one, I have an introductory slide just to, because we haven't really talked about this before, but I just wanted to provide a little bit of background about street classifications in Anacortes for these next couple of slides. So the Anacortes Comprehensive Plan Transportation Element categorizes all of the city's streets based on their function and the overall transportation system and, you know, level of use by traffic and surrounding land use characteristics. And so the street types that we have include principal arterials like SR20, which is a state highway, Commercial Avenue over to Oaks, and we also have collectors like M. Avenue right here and 41st Street. And we also have local access streets, which are the purple ones, and those are what most of the neighborhood streets you see with the lower volume traffic are classified as. And I think I may have missed one in here, but principal, collector, local, minor, and private. So those are all the different classifications of streets. And when a new development is proposed, the street classification for where it accesses from determines the design of required improvement. So if they have to do frontage improvements, then they go to this table in the code, and it says, okay, you need 60 feet of right-of-way and 6-foot sidewalk and 6-foot landscape strip. So this, the classification system is important to determining required improvements in development. So that's my background. So the next proposed amendment is related to Section 19.52.040A2, and the title of this one is Modified in Special Street Standards. So as I mentioned, new development is generally required to make improvements to adjacent public streets to help mitigate a development's impacts on the transportation system. And the code currently contains specific geometric design standards for each street classification, which includes, you know, the lanes, local access, collectors, and arterials. And those standards include, like I mentioned already, minimum width and sidewalk width and pavement width, et cetera. So the code also recognizes that the prescriptive standards for the street development are not all, don't always make sense within the context of a particular neighborhood or on a particular street, and it provides the opportunity for an applicant to request a modification to the standards, so they don't have to build something that would be out of place with the surrounding area. And so an example of this would be like a new single-family residence, proposed on a vacant lot within an older development that has no sidewalks anywhere in the vicinity. Our current code says that they would have to build sidewalks. And so there's a modification process to go through to look at the surrounding area and, you know, does it make sense to require sidewalks in this location or not based on the neighborhood character? And so that applicant would have to apply for a modification. But, sorry, I lost my train of thought here. But what the code also provides for is the ability to prepare special street standards for an entire area or neighborhood or street, so that there could be a plan that identifies, okay, this area is special, and we're not going to require the full meal deal, you know, 6-foot paved sidewalks and, you know, 60 feet of right-of-way, et cetera. And so anyways, that place is, that language is already in the code. What we would like to do is clarify the adoption process for special street standards. So we would like to clarify that special street standards for a particular area would need to be approved by city council by ordinance. That's it. That was a very long explanation to get to that, but I kind of wanted you to understand the background. Are there any questions on that one? Might make more sense when you see the actual draft text. Okay, moving on. So this is a table in the, in 1952-040, these are the street standards again, and this particular cross-section is for a lane, and that is a new standard that was introduced as part of the 2019 development regulation updates, kind of intended to be used for smaller infill subdivisions up to nine lots or units. So it's got a smaller minimum right-of-way width, 6-foot sidewalk and 6-foot landscape strip just on one side of the street instead of on both, and then a minimum of 20 foot, 20 feet of paved roadway. So what we would like to do here is add a note to this table that clarifies that when folks propose to use this standard, they still need to plan for guest parking somehow into the design of the road. With a 20-foot wide paved road, that's not enough room to have parking on the street and allow an emergency vehicle to get by, and so there, we'd have to have no parking on those streets, basically. So this code amendment would say, okay, if you're going to do this type of standard, then you'll need to either integrate additional parking onto each lot in the subdivision or somewhere else on the property, have a few additional spaces for guests to park. Okay, almost there. This is C8, Section 1952-080, Street Names and Signage, and this proposal is to add a provision allowing the fire marshal or public works director to require installation of no parking signage or other curb or pavement markings when a development contains a street with insufficient pavement width to allow for simultaneous on-street parking and emergency vehicle access. So really, this is for any new street that's 20 feet, 24 feet wide or less. And so this amendment would just be adding this language, making it clear that the public works director or fire marshal can require signage, no parking allowed on this, on this street. And a potential companion amendment to this, based on some other recent changes, would be potential change to Chapter 10.12 regarding standing, stopping, and parking to ensure that the police department has the authority necessary to enforce the signage. That would be placed under this provision, so that's something that I'll need to look This is Section 1953-03OB, Driveway Location, and this is one of the ones that's kind of been a challenge to interpret and administer. And so what we would like to do is make some clarifications. This section is basically talking about for new development or certain development types, where the driveway or access to parking needs to come from. And the general idea of this section is that when a development is proposed on a property that has frontage on more than one street or on two different streets, that the new driveway should be located on the street with the lowest functional classification, so the street that is the least amount of traffic on it. So if you're on Commercial Avenue and 32nd, your access would have to be on 32nd because it's a lower functional classification. So that's kind of the basic way that these work. And then if there is an alley that exists, then access needs to come from the alley. So our public works department has identified some need for clarification in this section regarding what the lowest volume street means for purposes of determining required driveway access. And there have also been some challenges with provisions requiring alley access as they currently are written, and we've been working with the public works department to try and tweak that language so it's a little bit more clear for everybody when they get into, you know, designing their house, where is access going to come from, the street or the alley? And finally, we would like to add a provision requiring driveway relocation from the street to an alley in certain circumstances. There's currently no language that addresses that, so just some clarification on when that might be required. And an example of that is if there was a, there is a house on a lot and it's demolished, and then somebody wants to construct an entirely new house, should they have to change their Okay, next one, AMC, Chapter 19.66, Fences. So a fence permit is a relatively new concept in Anacortes, haven't required them prior to 2019. In 2019, there were some pretty significant changes made to the fence code, so in order to make sure that everybody was aware of what the requirements were before they built their fence, we implemented a requirement for a fence permit. Unfortunately, there is no language in the fence code 1966 referencing that requirement, so it's a little bit unclear to folks that it's required, although it is identified elsewhere in the code. So we'd like to add that language into that chapter to make it very clear. And then also, there are some proposed amendments to you. This is just a figure, a picture that's in the code, and we'd like to just make some adjustments to that, to make it easier to explain to folks at the counter what the code means. Thanks, Dave. Dave gets to administer the fence code every day. And then finally, AMC 1967, Signs. So also in 2019, the sign code was redrafted following a ruling by the U.S. Supreme Court that said that a sign code that treats various categories of signs differently based on the information that they convey violates the First Amendment. And so in 2019, the sign code was updated to focus on a sign's physical and other non-content-based attributes rather than content-based categories. And we got to put this to the test during the 2021 political season, and we got a little bit of feedback, and we noticed that the code as written is a little bit confusing and not very easy for folks to understand. And so we would like to take some steps to fix that and make it more understandable. And also, there are a couple of incorrect references and typos that we would like to fix as part of this amendment as well. The end, almost. Okay, so the next steps in the annual amendment docket process, this is what we are proposing at this point. So tonight, we just did an introduction to the docket, we went through all of the amendments and kind of described generally what they are. And then what we are thinking is that on March 30th, we will publish a notice of availability, a SEPA determination, public comment period, and public hearing notice, so it'll be one notice for all of those things. And we will publish all of the proposed amendments on the website, staff report, specific text for each of the proposed development regulation amendments. And there will be a public comment period running to April 22nd, 2022, with a public hearing currently scheduled, or not scheduled, but we're currently tentatively thinking April 20th, 2022, which is not a regular planning commission meeting date, so we need to check in with you and see if that is a possibility for a special meeting. And we can talk about that more offline, or no?
Just one question. If the public comment period ends April 22nd, would we not want to have the public hearing after that date?
You know, I-
So we could incorporate all of the comments?
I think, yeah, what I was thinking is that we could come back to the planning commission after the written public comment period is over, and staff would present, okay, here's all of the comments we received during the public hearing and the written public comment period. We find that sometimes people like to wait until they've seen the presentation at the public hearing and listen to everybody else's comments before they submit their comments, and this gives them a couple of days to be able to do that. So that was my thought on that scheduling.
So if we close the public hearing, and then we have subsequent public comment coming in, it's not technically considered part of the hearing, is that correct?
Well, it's part of the public comment period, the written public comment period, so we can, we can close the-
So it's still incorporated by virtue of that?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking.
No, that's a good, great question, thank you. And then the next steps would be planning commission, review of the public comments, and recommendations to city council, and hopefully would be before city council in the May-June timeframe for review and adoption.
Great. I see we're coming close to the end of our agenda. Do the commissioners have any questions for Ms. Grage?
Mr. Chair.
I don't know why, but I have a feeling that some of these other meetings are going to go very long.
I'm sorry, can you-
I think some of these meetings are going to, the public's invited to speak about all of these items, we could be here for quite a while.
Yeah, certainly possible.
I can't imagine we won't be.
Yeah. I like to encourage folks to submit written comments, just because we have the time limit on the spoken comments at the public hearing, and when folks submit written comments, you kind of have more time to review and digest, and so anyways.
Great, thank you. Any other comments?
I just wanted to recognize Ms. Grage and Ms. Morgan for a really well-presented brief tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you, it was very effective. And with that, we'll close the meeting for March 23rd, thank you.